And we're meeting and advertising station.
Everything's set up.
Me to copyright.
Morning.
All right, you're all set.
All right.
Morning.
I don't know about that.
All right, so it's seven o'clock and you know where your children are. Remember that guy on TV with seven o'clock?
Then they changed it, you know where your parents.
They did.
Yeah, their bed.
Ed Murphy, the timekeeper, ding, seven o'clock. Know where your children are. For the young people in the room, go look it up. Google that thing. All right, with that said, we'll call the meeting to order. Um, so first on the agenda is James Owen, um, board, I'm Mark Colvin, I'm the chairman. We have Larry over here. We're glad you remember, Rick.
Yeah, I'm Ted, I provide legal assistance to the board. Just by way of background, uh, Mr. Owen, on behalf of the property owner, the occupant has submitted a side permit for three sides of building across the street. Now, one of the sides is compliant with the code. Uh, two others, however, as proposed, exceed certain limits that the code imposes. Uh, so for that reason, uh, the planning board referred Mr. Owen to come to the zoning board of appeals to request variances for the two sides in question, which are the application referred to. Side A, which would be over the entrance to the door, that's sign C, which, as I recall, would be to the right of the entrance. Uh, but Mr. Owen's here, so he can fill us in the details, um. For both applications today, under the New York State secret regulations, each would be considered a type two action. For the board, that means it is not required to do any further secret investigation. So if somebody would just propose a motion to adopt that finding, we get a second bonehead, we'll take care of that.
Option to adopt that? Sure. Backing in, all on the day room.
Hi, okay, secrets taken care of. Uh, yeah, we can ask Mr. Owen to fill in whatever I missed. Why he's here.
Hello, my name is James Owen, I'm here with Paul Messina, who is one of the owners for the restaurant. Um, and essentially, do you want me to kind of go through the, the, each of the signs and how they're built and all that?
I don't know the specific details of how they're built, I think, or what you want to make changes with the signs? If you can ask any questions, if there's a question about how the signs are built.
Um, so there's, uh, um, and we were talking about already, a couple of the signs that have, um, some lettering that's larger than what's allowed and the overall sign. Um, and some of that is kind of brought about because of the, and I'm sure you've seen the facade over there, but the, you know, the, the entrance tower over the front door is a particular size, you know, the height and the width of it. And so we're trying to just kind of fill in and kind of match that size. Now, we're not exactly, you know, making it the same size as the elevation, but it's, you know, i- i- if we cut it down to what's allowed, it really doesn't look right, you know, with that elevation, unfortunately. So we've, we've increased, um, the, uh, the overall, the Apisa elementari, which is the name of the restaurant. Um, the, the sign that's going over the front door, which is signed A. Um, the maximum allowed, and we were saying it's twenty-four inches, we're going to thirty-one inches. And that's kind of driven by the, uh, the Apisa word that's above, um, the elementari. Those letters are about as small as we can really get them and still be legible, you know, from the road in it. You know, it's a sidewalk and as you're kind of slowly driving by, but, um, you know, so then that then kind of correlates to the larger elementary, uh, word that's underneath, um, the Apisa. And so, um, on, uh, sheet, if sign three, there's a little more detail in the dimensions for the lettering, um, on each of the three signs. Um, so the, on the elementary, the, 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 the lowercase letters are eleven inches. Um, and then the uppercase letters are twenty inches. Um, so the, uh, and then the overall is thirty-one when you combine the two words together. So for the most part, we've got all the letters, you know, under the twelve inches, but, um.
Twelve inches what's allowed, right?
So a question for you, um, clarification of the code, if those two words were separated more, would those let those eleven inch letters for a pizza be within the code? Because you're combining the Apisa with the other word and you're, you're measuring from the bottom of that to the top of that and call it thirty-one inches, but it's actually two separate words.
So you're thinking.
I was asking.
Yeah, I don't know, um, I was looking at Mike in a dumbfounded, wondering if.
If I thought all that.
If separation of the two.
Yeah, so for example, if a pizza was in the upper left-hand corner, would you need a variance on thirty-one inches? Because a pizza is a separate word from, from elementary, which by Italian.
We would still would, because the elementary is.
Well, the elementary part, we would need the variance for the twenty-four inch letter, right? The, the capital letters, but I'm just talking about when you, when you put that word above the other word, that makes it thirty-one inches. But if they were separated, it wouldn't be thirty-one inches, it'd be two separate words.
So they'd be considered two signs.
That, that's my question, not two signs, but two words on a sign, right? So I don't know how that is impacted by the, the code.
But I think there's a assigned dimension as well involved.
Well, yeah, but we're talking about the height of the letters of being thirty-one inches, but they're two separate words. So is, so you're counting the, 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 you're adding. Right?
Whatever plays. And the DGA has the page, A, B, and C, those are.
Yeah, so it's, the one is for the height, the overall height, and the second one is for the letter, those individual letters that are bigger, so I'm reading them.
Yeah, well, I'm just asking for clarification, that's why I was, that's why I was asking was clarification on that.
And the, and the, on the elementary, the capital letters are twenty inches. So they're about the twelve inch. Allowed.
So spread the words out, so it's salvage.
I don't, I don't think so, yeah.
Is that the visual layout in either?
Yeah, and to change it, yeah, change the graphic of it, yeah.
Right, yeah, I was just, I was just asking for clarification, this is a little confusing and, yeah. Okay, go ahead, finish, I'm sorry, I mean that. Totally sidetracked you.
Um, so that's the, uh, so that's for sign A, and then, um, sign C, which is, um. Yeah, around, so that one's on the side, on the side door of the, of the entry tower that faces the parking lot. So that's going to be kind of the primary entrance when people are coming in from the parking lot. And so the purpose of that sign, because you know, the, the elementary, you know, it's not kind of recognizable as a, as a market, an Italian market, and you know, what it's meant for and, and what they offer in there. So this, this sign that, um, sign C, um, kind of outlines what is being offered in the restaurant. So, you know, you have things like the tortilla and you have the pizza and, you know, you have sandwiches and coffee and bakery and, you know, those kinds of, um, um, callouts, you know, for what's being offered, uh, in the restaurants. So it's not necessarily a specials board where you have different meals and things like that. It's, 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 it's one and done, it doesn't get changed every week with, with that. So it's, uh, it's more of a, kind of a, um, assigned to, to, uh, to highlight what they offer as, uh, specials in the restaurant. Um, and, you know, and again, because the, the idea, the concept behind the restaurant is to offer, um, many different, um, types of foods, so you have a bakery, you have a, uh, you can have coffee and espresso. Um, you have a deli, you have pizza, you know, you have a sit-down restaurant, you have a wine bar in the bar. You know, so there's all these different elements and it's kind of a, um, you know, morning, noon, and night kind of a concept, so there's always something going on there. So, um, the idea is to be able to let people list that out, so people can see, you know, what's happening. And so to try and scrunch that into a small sign that's twenty-four by twenty-four, you know, is a max or twenty-four inches tall. It just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work, uh, very well. So, so that's the, that's the concept behind that, uh, sign C. Um, and being over at that entry door, like people are walking in.
There are the other sign that's over there, which I'm not sure what those two, three words are, um, but that signs within the code.
Yeah, and that one's kind of more of, um, I would, we don't probably more of like, uh, you know, it's painted on, it's, you know, it's stenciled onto the stucco that, that's on the building, so it's not so much as an applied sign. You know, so it's more of a painted on.
Is it a design?
So it's kind of, yeah, it's kind of paint, it's painted, you know.
And what does it mean?
It means all day, all day.
Thank you.
And you know, the, the Italians, you can't have just two words that say all day.
Yeah, it's anything short of Italian, my mom was Italian, so nothing short, it's all very long, very long.
I kind of looked at that I see is almost her work.
Yeah.
That's what?
It's a powerful. And if you put it in the window, um, it could very well be code.
Sign C.
Twenty-four, yeah, twenty-five percent of the window. So what senses on the outside, still saying and then I guess it's a little tall, so.
So with, with the code, the three signs, because even though that's kind of artwork, it's still a sign, right? That we don't exceed the limits of the sign code for a number of signs.
Just, uh, the height, just.
But not, but the other side over the door that's open all day, that sign.
Yeah, that's good to go.
That's good to go, and it doesn't, and it doesn't add to the sign count causing a problem. Okay. Want to make sure we just clarify that.
Unless you adhere anything else from the applicant, the next thing you do is open a public hearing.
Yeah.
See if anybody else wants to.
So sign C is just, um, the code's four feet in height and it's six feet.
The code's, the code's two.
No, the code is two.
Two by four, two by four.
For sign C.
It's two by four.
All right, the last sentence on recap, sign C measures six foot vertical height, code is four.
Right, it's two by four is the sign size. So they're asking for a two-foot relief.
Yeah, that's a staple.
I was gonna say, and, uh.
Yeah, the code is two foot by four foot.
It's four foot. Yeah. So that's, that's confusing.
Yeah, very bad.
Yep, all right, so motion to open up the public hearing?
So moved.
Anybody, all in paper?
So six.
unanimous. So just a little clarification tonight, we have three active members of the board, so anything that we decide tonight has to be unanimous. So depending how the discussion goes, if you want it to be before a full board, we can table it. Uh, if we need to and have it at the next meeting, um, for the full board, because we all have to agree unanimously to, to conduct any business this evening, there were a short couple methods, okay? All right, so with that said, anyone have any input they'd like to make on the, on the presentation?
When are you going to be open?
It happened best night, but we all look in February. We're.
Um, for the record, I have not received any comments or inquiries, so I think there's no evidence for or against it.
By one, by twice, by three times? All right, well, I know we'll be closed, Megan, I second that, although they are high. All that in favor for discussion, so what do you guys think? Personally, I, you know, I'm looking at it, I don't see a big issue with either, and I mean, the side on the side makes sense. Uh, the front side isn't. It, it fits the, it fits the size of the building. Um, if you make it smaller, it's a little kind of silly.
Really? I feel like what was there, Kirby's letters couldn't have been that much smaller.
No, I do have one question I didn't ask was, there's going to be no backlighting on this one, right? No neon, no surprise, like neon trim?
There's, so apparently in the canopy, there's a, there's linear si- uh, lighting, I'm sorry, um, that's on the up, the top side of the, the overhang, if it will, over at the front doors and they shine.
Okay, but it's not going to be a backlight to sign, okay? Thank you, I would just want to clarify that. Um, yeah, I don't see a big issue. All right, so let's make a motion.
Uh, just for sake of the record, let me fly through the five criteria. Uh, the boards.
Yep.
Uh, required to consider. Number one, uh, would granting that these variances resulted in any undesirable changes in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No, no. Unanimously, no?
Yes.
Okay, uh, number two, could the, uh, applicant achieve the benefit of signage by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than asking for an area variance?
I'd say yes.
Uh, yeah, uh, you know, obviously they could request or put in a proposal for sites that satisfy the code, so. It's option, what option, look, others. Question number three, that is the board consider the variance request substantial?
Uh, for sign C, I would say yes. Yeah. For sign A, I would say probably not, that's a banal.
Word agrees, okay. Uh.
So everyone feels.
Yep. Question number four, would the grading the variance have an adverse effect at physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
Oh, no.
And then the last question is whether the, uh, the difficulty has been self-created.
Yes.
Yes, the answer is.
Right.
Yes. Uh, okay, so the board's uh, go through the five criteria, it is now is a position to entertain devotion. Uh, the requested variance is what I propose. Uh, uh, page three of the draft is, uh, I, I just listed out the three variances.
Uh, I would say we should make a motion, it, uh, in favor of it.
And second, okay? Well, with, with the, we got to change that typo on the front page then.
Yep, yep, we did that.
Okay. All those in paper?
Bye.
Bye.
Okay, uh, motion's granted, just. I don't forget, remember if you had a back of the board table, said it's.
They'll be open tomorrow, right?
Number one, put to you one last time.
You know, you're going to open tomorrow?
Your rest perfection.
Home made meatballs on PJ's frozen, right?
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you very much. More cinnamon roll. Or something like that.
Yeah, something good.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the next one. Mr. Come, is it Koch?
Uh, it's, my last name has like, Mayor Ed Koch. We've always said Cook, because there's a brewery called Cook's Brewery. And then in the Midwest, there are the Coke Brothers, all spelled the same, so. Yeah, used to it. Except when I was in trouble, it was C O L ten.
Just by way of background, the applicant has been before the planning board, planning board referred it. Uh, there was a split at the planning board on whether or not to grant the variance, three to, uh, three opposed, two in favor, uh, based on the their position about granting variances in the front yard is more of an impact than if a variance were to be granted in the backyard for a deck. Uh, nonetheless, it's the board's decision whether or not to grant the variance that was standing. The recommendation, just wanted you to be aware of it, planning board did weigh in. Uh,
The people that had objections, was it just because it was the front yard, or was there another specific? Um, objection to it?
Yeah, my recollection is, when, it was because it was a front yard variance and, you know, it'll be more recognizable, noticeable on a drive down the street kind of thing. As if a, the pair come up, there is where anything for backyard, the nose on the planning. So the deck would be.
Yeah, got it. Even though it's not passed out. So, even the, the current building. I, yeah, I just, I was just clarifying for the record.
Yeah, it does, that, the proposal does not extend past the front line of the existing structure that's currently there.
Yep, it just occupies additional space to the side of that existing structure.
Right.
So, that's how we got it.
All right.
I need someone to answer for me. Just going to, um, offer that I, um, did a little bit of homework, I went up and I can give you these. I went up and down the street and I took photographs of porches within walking distance of my house. And I measured from the porch to the sidewalk from the median and to the street, and none of those meet thirty-foot requirements, so I'm not asking for something unreasonable. You know what I mean, like, there it is, walking distance from my house, but um, really boils, the whole thing really boils down to one thing. What I want to do, and I, this, I think, can really demonstrate, and it's quick, and I won't have to take a lot of your time. The yellow that you see right here is the existing porch that we redid and we used Trex decking there. The green is what's proposed, and what I want is I want this green area to match the Trex. And be built, you know, like I would have floor joists and then just put Trex decking over it. And this would be a screen wall here made out of verseta stone, which match, matches the rest of my house, which I use verseta stone everywhere. So it's going to look really nice. It's four feet back from the front of my house, because there's this, you look right here, there's a sidewalk right now, there's a stone sidewalk that's there. And I'm just inside of that stone sidewalk, which is four feet back from the front of my house. So, um, but when I gave the floor plans and the, the detailed plans for what I wanted to do, Mike then informed me that it still didn't meet the thirty-foot front yard setback requirement. So that's why I'm here. Okay, um, and the reason, I would just naively assume that because I was back from the front of my house, that I was okay, you know what I mean, and ev- everything else, the, the side yard setback, I'm, I'm okay on. You know, so.
In the front, in the front corner of your house, your, that approaches the sidewalk right there, if I remember correctly, right?
It's very close, yeah, yeah. Yep, it's the, this is not.
Not drawn to scale.
Well, it's not only that, but I've measured from, okay, I've taken a measurement from each corner of my house to the sidewalk. And those dimensions that are on there are not correct, the sidewalk's actually further back. But not, not by a lot, you know what I mean, maybe three or four feet. So I'm not, I don't want to split hairs there, but I, for whatever reason, it's grown.
Your house.
Not my house, but the sidewalk has moved. Okay?
Okay.
If you went out there and you measured from the corner to the sidewalk, it would be different than what's on that site plan, and it would be, it's actually to my advantage in my way of thinking, because the sidewalk's actually further out and the street is further out. So.
And these conform to the side, right, to the sideline?
When, if I just, this is kind of a side thing, but I have two, uh, air conditioning units, condensing units.
Right.
They're really unsightly in my view, and I, I'm going to hide them. That's a lot of the impetus for this whole thing.
Are you going to cover them with the Trex, or how are you going to hide them? You're going to have the.
No, that's it. Right here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I saw, I saw it today, yeah, I agree, I agree, it would be, definitely clean up that side of your house, those things sitting there, but.
Yeah.
I, I just wonder how you're going to hide them.
Exactly what you said, I, it's like that side of my house, it needs to be cleaned up, exactly, and that's what my intention is. No.
So this is all going to be enclosed with these walls? The red and the two stone?
Yeah, this is a railing, just, you know, I, technically I don't need it because I'm less than thirty inches. But I think for safety, you know what I mean? A little bit of privacy, I'm going to put a railing there, and I did that because it matches the rest of my house and my addition, so I just stayed with the same theme.
Think about how many questions?
And the current, the current porch, you're going to extend the current porch, it's there, and that's even with your door coming out?
Yes, yes, exactly, so right now.
Yeah.
Right now, there's a railing that goes across here, so I would take that railing out and then you would just walk out like that. No stairs, no tripping hazards.
The boards probably see these properties, but let me see. Look at those photos, Larry, how far back is, is this from the sidewalk?
It's water. I'm from, from, from right here to the sidewalk, it's probably about fifteen feet, give or take.
Yeah, that's confusing.
And that's to the sidewalk, the sidewalk is four feet wide. That's nineteen feet, the median is about, or five feet wide.
So the sidewalk plow can still go through and won't be any kind of issue, even where the snow.
Not at all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, is that in terms of front wall, Larry, that is the front wall? Uh, looking at the, um, the surveyor, is that basically even where the tar ends on that little driveway you have on that side of the house, or is it?
Um, one of the drawing.
On that drawing right there.
Where, one of the drawings that I sent, the rendering that I did.
On the Mylaw paper?
Yeah, I remember the, the that has a pretty accurate, um, prediction of where the driveway ends, where the sidewalk extends over and then lead you into the.
But you haven't really been using the driveway inside your house, I know, right? You're talking about, yeah, there's a driveway here now, yeah, but you really haven't been using that.
Got a little secondary.
You have been using that.
All the time.
Okay, so you're going to lose driveway and you just driveway on the other side of the house then.
So you're going to lose a hundred percent of that driveway, it's going to be.
I'm not losing any of the driveway.
That's right, that's what I was asking, so this wall, this might be the picture. This wall.
Picture of this image, I forgot that we had this.
Yeah, yeah. This, this driveway, this is pretty accurate, okay, and so the driveway is here and it's unchanged. In fact, the only thing I want to do is put some greenery here. Um, until you get to the existing sidewalk here, just, just again, to make the place look really finished and done.
Okay. A motion to open up the public hearing?
The move.
All of it, I, unanimously approved, open up the meeting, anybody have any comments, concerns?
Anything from any neighbors or anything, Karen?
No. And the comments, uh, received or employers or against?
All right. Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
So moved. unanimously. Discussion. I, I mean, I don't see a big issue with it, especially considering that it's, even the front of his house doesn't comply with the setback of the moment, and he's still backfiring in his house.
Did you, did you get a chance to look at it?
Yeah.
Today?
I, well, I drove by.
Yeah. I mean, I pulled in your driveway, opened mine and walked around, but, but, uh, I, I'd be just trying to do is, makes a lot of sense to me, but if I had that, I was going to hide those compressors.
Yeah, and the fact is, is it does accept, it doesn't affect the front of the house. Um, it's on the side of the house, and I, I don't think that that's a, a really big issue, and it is going to feed up the side of that house, it would be nicely. All right. Want to go with the secret application?
Uh, secret, I'll go through that, that criteria. Uh, with granting the variance resulted in a desirable change of the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
Yeah.
Uh, number two, could the. Uh, number two, could the applicant achieve the benefit by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area of variance?
Yes.
Yes.
Of course, there's different options, you can take that. Question number three, uh, does the board consider that area variance request substantial?
Yes.
Yes.
It's, it's substantially less setback from those thirty-three feet down to like thirteen feet, it's pretty substantial difference in, uh.
What required is thirty, he's requesting thirteen.
Yeah, right, it's more than half.
So. Okay. Uh, question number four, would, uh, granting the variance have an adverse effect on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
No.
Yeah, the last question is, uh, the ledge difficulty self-communicating.
Absolutely.
Uh, okay, the board's going through the five criteria. With what gives us now the position where it could consider a motion to under a full board that has a variance request.
I need to see a motion approved, back in, all in favor, aye, unanimous.
Okay, variance is granted.
There you go. All right, so.
Other take, some of these.
You can. This, oh wait, this one is yours, sorry.
That's okay.
Well, you might want to leave the picture just for the record.
Uh, you don't, but.
I don't mind leaving those for a while, yeah.
Leaving these for the final.
You want this?
Uh, I don't.
No, that one's okay, because.
Yeah, you can take that one back.
You know, when I'm a famous architect, those are going to be worth a lot of money.
No, they just cost a lot of money. Come on, get it ready.
Thank you both, you can follow up with Mike tomorrow, start us that further.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. But, yeah, you get it built before Christmas? I'm sorry, are you going to build before Christmas? One more time, are you going to get it built before Christmas?
I don't know. I don't know.
For the ground freezing this?
I know, it is going to warm up, I hear.
That would be nice.
Yeah, it would be good. I wouldn't want to be doing that on a day like today.
All right, so, other visits.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any objectives to the minutes we're set out by email, any tracking changes? Motion to accept the minutes as presented, all in favor, aye, aye, unanimous. Next meeting, due to be determined December fifteenth, if I'm wrong?
If I don't have anything, I think I'll find out by the end of this week.
Yes.
Um, you may have another bite.
All right, a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty-two, second. All in favor, aye, aye, adjourned.